In 2012, the Board of Education approved a revised Student Code of Conduct that was designed to put greater focus on corrective and instructive practices and to reduce the number of punitive out-of-school suspensions and expulsions. We know that suspensions result in lost instructional time, adversely impact attendance, adversely impact academic achievement, and weaken a child's connection to the school. The updated Student Code of Conduct brought promising results to our high schools, including a 36 percent decline in out-of-school suspensions over the past three years. After careful review, the team and I agree that we must build on this success, and we've developed a plan to make significant progress in reducing the number of expulsions and out-of-school suspensions across the district. I'd like to introduce our Chief Officer of College and Career Success, Arthi Dupelia, who will provide an overview of our suspension and expulsion reduction strategy to date. Arthi?
Thank you, CEO Bird Bennett, and good morning, President Vittalian, members of the Board. I'm very honored to be sharing with you today our district's comprehensive suspensions and expulsions reduction plan. As our CEO just stated, this work builds on positive progress that we've made in the past with respect to our student discipline practices, but it also acknowledges that there is much, much more work to be done. The work of this plan has recently begun, and our success going forward will require extensive citywide collaboration with teachers, principals, and staff at the school network and central office level, with students, our CEO Student Advisory Council, parents, our LSCs, the CTU, the CPAA, our charter school partners, as well as a large number of critical city and community partners such as the Department of Family Support Services and Project NEA. And I do want to give a special thanks to Project NEA, who has been a close partner in this work as we've developed this plan over the past few months. And under our CEO's leadership, I'm very honored to be carrying this work forward with our partners. So why are we focused on this work? We know that overuse of suspensions and expulsions as a discipline practice can negatively impact student achievement by keeping students out of class when they can't learn, therefore they can't learn, and by creating a negative overall school climate. And we do recognize this in CPS and have made progress on this front. As the CEO referenced, in 2012, the Board did approve a revised Student Code of Conduct, and we've expanded professional development on school practice as well since then, and we have seen positive progress in our discipline data and reductions in our suspensions data. Building on this progress, earlier this month, we did announce this comprehensive suspensions and expulsions reduction plan, and we've also launched an internal working team as well as an external citywide collaborative to advise on this work going forward. And we hope to learn from our successes in this district and nationwide to enhance our policy and practice. I would also add that recent deeper analysis of our district's suspensions and expulsions data has really reaffirmed the importance of this plan, that again, we are making progress, but there is more to be done. So as I stated, we're focused on this work because it impacts student achievement. Research from the U of C Consortium on Chicago School Research has actually shown us that attendance predicts graduation much better than test scores, and students can't attend class if they are suspended. We also know that students who are suspended are more likely to be held back and to drop out. And while many adults may believe that punitive discipline practices improve student behavior, we actually know otherwise from studies nationwide and from our own practice. Punitive responses are not nearly as effective as efforts to build a positive school climate, to keep students in the classroom, and to teach them to modify their behaviors. So our goal is to really push for much more restorative and instructive discipline practices going forward. So I wanted to provide a little bit more context on the Student Code of Conduct, the changes made in 2012, and the positive impact that we've seen since then. So the Code of Conduct, as we know, essentially provides a guide to preventing and intervening effectively to address behavior. National research states that suspensions should only be used when students or staff are at risk for physical or emotional harm, and we need to continue to move in that direction in our own policy and practice. And with that being said, our 2012 changes to the Code of Conduct were a great step forward in that direction. So on the left side, you can see some examples of the highlights of the changes that we made in 2012. So explicit language focusing on restorative practices, suspensions explicitly being named to be used as a last resort, reducing the mandatory length of suspension days for our most severe misbehavior, as well as encouraging the use of in-school suspension as an alternative to out-of-school suspension so that students can continue to learn. And we have seen positive impact in reductions of suspensions at the high school level, in reductions in the length of suspensions in terms of number of days, and seeing more and more schools getting trained on positive behavior systems. So how have we achieved this progress beyond just simply the policy changes? This slide really outlines some of our core strategies and highlights some example school success stories. So we really look at this work in terms of three core strategies. So first is around preventive practices that are really around providing universal supports for all students, so building a positive learning climate, teaching classroom management techniques to prevent or de-escalate misconducts, and implementing programs that proactively build social-emotional skills and integrate them with core academics. Second is targeted intervention strategies that really get at focusing on deeper behavioral issues, and that usually happens in smaller group settings or individual settings, so things such as anger coping therapy. And then finally, we look at alternatives to suspension and expulsion that provide much deeper, more intensive responses to our highest-level behaviors, again, as an alternative to expelling students. And you can see some examples of schools who've been successful here. They continue to face challenges but are improving. So Harper High School, for example, has every one of the adults in the building adopted a school son or a school daughter so that every student in the building is connected to a caring adult, and someone's keeping an eye on that student. So moving forward, this really outlines the more comprehensive plan that we announced earlier this month, and it includes six key components that we're focused on. The first piece is further revisions to our Student Code of Conduct. So again, we've made strides moving away from zero tolerance in the past, but there's more to do. And a couple of things I'll highlight in particular. One is, in comparing our Student Code of Conduct to other districts nationwide, we've found that we continue to be more punitive in terms of the types of infractions that we suspend students for. So for example, use of a cellphone. And so we want to take another look at that and reduce the types of infractions students can be suspended for. The second piece is really looking at subjectivity in some of the language in the Student Code of Conduct. So when you have an infraction, like defying authority, that can be interpreted in a lot of different ways, and that subjectivity is often what leads to disproportionality by race when we look at our suspensions and expulsions numbers. The second piece is really around enhancing our accountability systems. So one, that includes just providing better data to schools so they can intervene earlier on and take action. Second, it's about transparency in our data and just providing data to the public to increase transparency and increase focus on the work. And today, we are posting district and school-level suspensions and expulsions data on the CPS.edu website. The third piece is really around just continuing to develop tools that can support both staff and parents in this work, because we know we need to support our teams to really be effective in this work. So an example of that is we're drafting an Alternative to Suspensions Guide that really helps teachers and principals, deans, assistant principals think about other ways to address student misbehavior, rather than us just saying, "Stop suspending kids, let's teach them alternatives." We're developing resources for early childhood educators that didn't exist in the past, and we're developing resources for our parents as well to be able to support this work at home. Staff engagement and training is obviously very closely linked to number three, so really continuing to codify what's working and train all our staff on these best practices and learn from our school leaders who are really doing this well and apply those learnings to other schools. The fifth piece is around our expulsion process, and really revising that going forward to be more supportive. Currently, we have an expulsion process where a student is referred up front from their school to our law department to begin an expulsion hearing process, in which many cases, the student does not get expelled in the end. The student often gets referred to an alternative-to-expulsion supportive intervention program. And so we are modifying our process going forward in a couple key ways. One is so that first, at the school level, there is a conversation with the parents before any kind of action is taken beyond that level to really understand what's going on and have that deeper understanding. Second, after that point, if there is a decision to move forward, that referral will first come to my office, and we will actually look at, is there an opportunity to provide one of those alternative supportive interventions for that student, for example, for substance abuse, or for gang involvement, or anger management issues, rather than starting them down that legal hearing process? This will be a much more proactive approach and a much more supportive approach to meet students where they are and get them the supports they need. And the last piece, the CEO and I already referred to, is simply that citywide collaboration, which is a core component of our success. And we will be engaging internally and externally over the next couple of months to really get further guidance on our Code of Conduct as well as best practices going forward. As part of this work, we have also reached out to our charter school partners and asked them to partner with us so we can together jointly address the challenges we've seen in all of our schools, and they have embraced the opportunity to partner with us in this work. So more specifically, we are asking them to join us in this collaborative task force to look at all aspects of the plan, but within that, as we are intending to issue a revised Code of Conduct and bring those recommendations to the Board in June, we've asked our charter partners to reexamine their codes of conduct over the same timeframe. So they'll be bringing us revisions based on that joint analysis of our codes of conduct in June as well. Third, we are asking our charters to share student-level suspensions and expulsions data so that we are consistently transparent with discipline data for all of our schools. Fourth, in our charter approval and renewal processes going forward, we will create a preference for schools who are establishing a Code of Conduct that prioritizes instructive and restorative discipline practices as a response to misbehavior. And the last piece I want to mention is that our charters do not currently have access to the alternative-to-expulsion programs that I referenced earlier, and so one of the things we are going to do going forward is actually open up seats in those programs and offer those programs to our charter school students as well. So this slide summarizes the major pieces of the suspensions and expulsions data that is posting today. What this data highlights is what I have stated earlier, which is that we are seeing positive progress, but again, there is more to do. So I'll just walk through a few highlights in the data. And what this is showing is school year 11, 12, semester one, and end-of-year data, school year 12, 13, semester one, and end-of-year data, and then this school year semester one data. So the first thing I'll highlight is that suspensions at the high school level have been consistently declining, which is great news, and we believe it's largely due to the intensive work we've been doing with our high schools on this front. Secondly, for our elementary school students, we actually saw an increase last year, but we're starting to see positive progress and a decrease in suspensions this year, and we really see this as us responding to the data and starting to make a more intentional effort with our elementary schools this year. The third thing I will highlight is that the percentage of misconducts resulting in suspension. So that number has started to improve, but it's still a high percentage, and we want to push that down more and more and encourage schools to use alternatives to suspension. And this really links closely to why we also want to reduce the types of infractions that students can get suspended for. The fourth thing I will highlight is that, in line with national trends, African-American students in CPS are suspended disproportionately. We know this is an issue here, and it's an issue nationwide, and we are extremely focused on addressing it in a number of ways. So the first way is these revisions to the Code of Conduct. So I mentioned removing that subjectivity in language because that's often what leads to disproportionality. The second is around these stronger supports for students and staff, so training our staff better on building a positive learning climate, training our staff on alternatives to suspension disciplinary practices, and also ensuring our staff is trained on cultural awareness so we don't mistake changes and differences in culture for actual misbehavior. On top of that, our data transparency efforts are really going to create more awareness and more accountability, because we will be monitoring disproportionality more closely at the school and network level as well as district-wide so that we can target efforts more closely where they're needed. In many cases, we find that adults don't even realize that they're seeing this disproportionate behavior in their schools until we actually show them the data and point it out so that we can focus on it. And the last piece again is simply our engagement with external partners to really ensure the best solutions are brought forward to address this challenge. The last piece I'll highlight in the data is the bottom section on expulsions data. In that expulsions data, you can see the number of expulsions over time in district-managed schools versus the number of expulsions in charter schools. And we do see a higher rate of expulsion in charter schools in aggregate than in district-managed schools. As I stated, one caveat to this is that charter schools do not currently have access to those alternative-to-expulsion programs, which we will address going forward. And again, we will also work with our charter partners to reexamine their codes of conduct and to share best practices going forward. This slide really reiterates what I just shared, is that we do acknowledge the racial disparity in our suspensions and expulsions, and we have a comprehensive approach to address that. So I won't repeat all the bullets on this page. I just, in closing, I will just say that our next steps from here are really around continuing to dive deep into the data and look at trends by school, by network, by grade level to better focus on areas where improvements needed, and really then just launching these internal and external engagement efforts to develop a more comprehensive picture of the root causes and solutions we need to take on going forward. Thank you, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you. Arthi, any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Let me start with Deborah.
Sure. Great, thanks. One, first commend you all for this effort. I think it's critically important. I think it's work we need to do, and I think we all recognize that. I also think the data transparency is crucial, and I think really complete commendation to you all for that. I wanted to just clarify, you talk about the fact that the differentiation between charter numbers and non-charter numbers is partially attributable, most likely, because there's no intermediation process. So as I understand it, for charters, there's no formal process with them. As I understand it, the referral rate for expulsion is about the same between a charter and a non-charter, sort of 61 or 64 per 10,000. Is that fair? And that the difference is, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right, that there is a very effective remediation that occurs, and hopefully will get more effective in the district schools, in the non-charter district schools today than the charter schools because there is no intermediation process. Is that, that's going to get overly complicated, but is that somewhat right?
Yes and no. So you are correct that a large percentage of our students in district-managed schools who are referred for expulsion end up going to this alternative-to-expulsion program. I can't answer your question about the charter referrals because that's, we don't actually know the number of expulsion referrals in our charters. We just know the actual number of expulsions that occurred. And so as part of our request for more data transparency and consistency going forward, that's one of the data points we want to get from our charters going forward, is the number of referrals.
Okay. Is there an intermediation process at the charter, in charters today, or no? I mean, yeah, so they may be the same numbers, I guess, is just what I'm trying to...
They could be. We just don't know. But we only, right now, only get information on the actual expulsion. But charters are required by law to follow a due process step as part of their hearing process. So a student has to have a chance to explain their case as part of that process, but we don't have visibility into how many students entered into that hearing process.
And just one other quick thing. Do you have a, there's more volatility in the elementary side of things today, and that may have been surprising. Do you all have a sense for, you know, elementary versus high school and what dynamics may be happening there?
Sure. I think that our view at this point is we've just made a much more intentional effort at the high school level, and so we've seen a more consistent decline in our suspensions and expulsions over time. We're really just looking at the data over the past several months, have started to focus more intentionally on the elementary schools. You're starting to see more of a decline there.
Carlos, did you...
Yes, thank you. This is critical information, and also for providing a level of support, which is something that's greatly needed. I have two questions. One of them has to do with best practices in some schools. How are we learning from them when we see differences? And the second question, and it seems that maybe you've answered that, so when school models expel students, we don't have, they don't have to follow the same process, for example, contract schools, charter schools, as we do with neighborhood schools, and can this be part as they contract with us, you know? Or will it be included as we follow a single accountability system?
Absolutely. So to your first question, learning from who's doing this well is at the core of this plan. So I would highlight a couple of things. So one is, over the next couple of months, we're really going to be reaching out to our schools and looking where we're seeing positive improvements in the data and codifying the best practices that we're seeing, and even asking principals, teachers, others who are willing to participate in professional development of other schools who are struggling going forward. The other piece is, we're actually holding a social-emotional learning expo later this school year in May to really give schools a chance to sort of talk about the work that they're doing and share with other schools. With regard to the process, if I understood the question correctly, charter schools do not have to follow the same expulsion hearing process that we currently do. They do have to have a hearing, a due process step, but we don't have clear visibility into what exactly that looks like. So as we look at the Code of Conduct going forward, as we sort of look at what each other is doing, that is part of what we're examining to see if there is more alignment we can move toward.
Will they participate voluntarily, or will be in our district requirement as also a public school that will have to do that?
Legally, we cannot require participation in a given process, but we're obviously encouraging participation, and we've received really positive feedback from charters so far, and excitement about working on this work in tandem with us.
Thank you. Jesse?
Well, again, just want to echo thanks. I'm remembering back to early 2012 when students from Voice and Emma Ty would come here and call us out for not doing as much as we could do about this, and we did with James' help at that time, and a number of meetings with student groups, heck, a few at my law office, you know, did make a revision that summer of '12. But this is taking it much further to frankly where we need to be. So thank you, everybody involved in doing this. Again, borrowing from my profession, some laws in some states are unique to states, but there's usually a model code, like the Uniform Commercial Code, that states can borrow from. They usually borrow whole cloth, so they're pretty consistent. Any thought about creating a model Code of Conduct that folks can borrow from as liberally as they want, based on CPS's, but not necessarily?
Right, absolutely. So I think that's exactly what we'd like to do. So we're looking around the country at who are the districts who've shown the most improvement in misconduct, suspensions, expulsions, looking at the policies that they have in place to really try to triangulate all of those best practices and build our own model Code of Conduct, which we hope that all of our charter partners would adopt as a model, if not word for word, but really follow the same principles, again, in terms of focusing on restorative practices.
Is this data going to be reported on school report card data, information that, if it's not, I would recommend that it be there because it's a factor for families when choosing schools, you'd be aware of?
Absolutely. So right now, there is some suspension data on school progress reports, but we're looking at what are the most useful pieces, the highlights of this broad, this deep dataset that we've put out. What are the most useful pieces to put on the school progress report? Absolutely.
Thank you.
So I want to join my fellow Board members in congratulating Barbara and Arthi for the direction we're headed and for the transparency. I think it's absolutely critical to solving the problem, is to admit it, measure it, have people aware of it, and I think the programs you're taking are headed definitely in the right direction. I want to give Barbara, as much as you, an opportunity, because, you know, this whole thing really is to deal with the consequences of behavioral issues in our schools. And I think we all know that, to some extent, the root cause is what causes the behavioral issues. And I know, Barbara, you have a special interest in dealing with that, and while this particular presentation has a tendency to focus more on dealing with the consequences of that, I know, Barbara, you've got ideas about working more on the root causes. I, for one, have spent some time trying to understand the impact of violence on our children that delivers these issues, and I know you're aware of that, but it's an opportunity to say we're not trying to deal just with consequences of behavior, but how do we really help kids before they get to the behavioral problem?
Yeah, and to that, Mr. President, it is really important as a, it's not an adjunct, but it's another piece of this work that deals with the input, and that is clearly, how do we support parents? I mean, this is also, this is an issue that starts with apparent opportunities for learning about the input and the appropriate behaviors and appropriate consequences. We also want to help parents and older brothers and sisters to understand, in the framework, appropriate, what we call in schools, restorative practices. And so what are the kind of practices that we can assist parents with before their children are in school and when they start school? So that if you dive deeply into the elementary data, we're looking at our pre-K through grade three suspensions comparative as very, very high. And I often use the example of, you know, a young child who's transitioning from activity to activity in a kindergarten class. Little children don't deal with that well. And when it's time to transition, if I don't want to do that and I throw that crayon on the floor, that can be interpreted as disruptive behavior. And so how do we better work with our parents, work with our teachers and the people in the school buildings, but also with our children? In terms of, well, how do you let somebody know that you don't want to transition? And a lot of this, many of us here who have children, I mean, it's something that we live through. My daughter was not one who would transition from activity to activity and probably got suspended a little bit more in kindergarten and first grade than she should have. But we had to work through that as a family. We had to look for the supports of community. As we just had our faith-based leaders here, what are the kinds of extended practices and conversations that we have on the input that will alleviate the consequences that we're dealing with? We are approaching this with two prongs, but we thought that the transparency of the data, the corrective action on the output end was the first step while the team simultaneously works on the input end. And we will get the input end at the next reporting to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Arthi, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Hey, Barb?
In accordance with Illinois state law, all charter school operators are required to complete a renewal process at the conclusion of their contracts. This renewal process is essential to ensuring the strong accountability that we must demand from all of our schools regardless of the governance structure. As a district, we take numerous factors into account when considering renewal applications, including academic performance data, governance and compliance data, and financial management history. I'd like to introduce the Chief of Innovation and Incubation, Jack Elsie, who will provide an overview of this year's renewal recommendations.
Thank you, CEO Bird Bennett, President Vittalian, members of the Board. As you'll recall, on an annual basis, as Barbara said, we come to the Board to review a cohort of charter and contract schools whose contracts are expiring at the end of the fiscal year. During the final year of the contract, each school undergoes a thorough review to determine whether or not the contract should be renewed, and if so, under what terms that allow CPS to feel confident that the schools are operating so that students can be successful in college, career, and in life. This year's cohort of schools is listed on this slide above. There are five charter schools and three contract schools, and you'll notice that Elaine Locke is still undergoing contract negotiations, so we will move with them at an upcoming board meeting. However, the remainder, you'll see Chicago Math and Science Academy is a high school that serves students, middle school and high school that serves students in Rogers Park. Namaste is a K to eight that serves students in McKinley Park. Noble Network of Schools, they have 14 campuses that serve students across the city, mostly high schools, but one middle school, one 6 through 12 as well. Providence of Inglewood is a charter school that serves students in West Inglewood, K to eight. And then you'll notice that there are the three contract schools. Shy Arts, which is an arts-focused contract school that serves students on the South Side. You'll see Chicago Tech Academy, which serves students on the Near West Side, also a high school. And then Hope Institute Learning Academy, which serves students K to five and has a particularly large number of diverse learners that they serve and serve well. As Barbara mentioned, per Illinois school law, the local school district is required to conduct a review of charter schools prior to granting the renewal of any contractual agreement. Contract schools undergo a similar review per their agreement. They are held accountable to their agreement and applicable board policies, and also to, of course, Illinois school law. As with any review process, there are several potential outcomes that can happen as a result of that review. There can be a full five-term renewal. There can be a renewal under any number of years with, between one to five, with conditions, and also a non-renewal. As Barbara mentioned, I'll go into a little bit more detail on what we actually look at when we review a charter school during the renewal process. As Barbara mentioned, we review under three domains. If you'll recall, this is largely similar and concurrent with the reviews that we conduct with schools under the RFP process that the Board voted on last month. For academic performance, we look at the application that the school fills out that tells us about their program and their achievements. We also, if the school is not performing up to standards within their contract, we do a site visit to look at the school's performance in terms of culture, interview the staff, see if there are signs that... the staff, see if there are signs that, that point in a positive direction, or reinforce some more negative outcomes that we see. We also do a review of all the parental and family issues that, that my office has collected, that we receive over the period of the contract. We look at their performance accountability report, and we also look at how they perform with respect to their comparison school metric. For financial management, we look at the renewal application. We also, also look at their books more in detail if we do a site visit. We have financial accountability reports and financial audits that are conducted on a regular cadence. We also look at their five-year budget, their ability to manage against that budget over the course of their contract, and of course, their facility and Americans with Disabilities Act review process as well. And then under governance and compliance, again, we look at their application, their site visit. We do a governance review, also review parental issues, facility and ADA. And then we look at the sub, their service of subgroups of students that are particularly important, not only with the law, but certainly with what we feel is important as a district. So we do look at their, their ability to comply with the law in terms of serving diverse needs, diverse learners. That is the Office of Learner Support's, that's ODLSS snapshots in the litigation cases that may be underway at a school. And then we also look at their ability to serve English language learners as well. So in front of you are the recommendations for the renewal terms for each school in the cohort. As I said earlier, I'd like to note that we'll be coming to the board at a later date for a vote on Elaine Locke's contract, given that contract negotiations are still taking place. In addition, you'll note that we recommend conditions for some schools. From time to time, we will recommend these conditions where we have noted a school can improve in their financial management, operations, and compliance, or elsewhere. For Chicago Tech Academy, you'll see that the recommendation is for a one-year renewal with conditions. The one-year term recognizes that the school has had poor academic performance over its five-year term. However, the school's governing board brings valuable partnerships that provide students with opportunities they otherwise would not have. This approach would allow the board to find management that can drive stronger student achievement, and allow the school to continue to operate and improve. For Providence of Inglewood, you'll see the recommendation is for a three-year renewal with conditions. This recommendation recognizes some audit and compliance findings that the school did not address in a timely manner, but have since been addressed. It is a high-performing school academically, and with the corrections made, we are confident they provide a great educational opportunity for students in the community. The remaining schools, Namaste, Hope, CMSA, Noble, Shy Arts, and Shy Arts, have received full five-term renewals. Namaste continues to be one of the highest-performing charter elementary schools, and has been rated meeting standards for the past three years. Hope Academy was rated making reasonable progress in 2013, and shows strong culture and leadership, and continues to serve a high number of diverse learners to its credit. Shy Arts continues to offer a premier arts education to high school students citywide, and has an average ACT score over two points above the district average. CMSA has also performed solidly as a STEM high school, with an average ACT score of almost two points above the district average, and performing well above its comparison school consistently. Noble Network continues to be one of the highest-performing networks, with all 14 campuses meeting their contractual academic performance metrics for each of the past four years, and with every campus outperforming their comparison school consistently year over year. I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Henry?
What were the, the nature of the conditions for Shy Arts?
The, the nature of the conditions were financial in nature for Shy Arts. So let me look to my notes here to make sure that I can detail those for you.
Well, you don't have to detail them. I wanted to know.
Financial in nature. Essentially, it had to do with making sure the budgets were, were balanced, making sure that accounting was clean. And they have since undergone a, a comprehensive effort to address all of those concerns, and have met, are working to meet those, those conditions. And it's very clear to us they're working much more closely with our office to do that.
So on Noble, which, as you note on the page before, had, I think, multiple schools, like 14 or something like that, as I recall, is the approval for the network, or is it the approval for individual schools within the network? I assume the latter.
It's a, it's a great question. So as you know, there are a certain number of charter schools who are replicating charters, which means they technically, under the state, have one charter school with multiple campuses. Noble is one of those charter schools. And so when we conduct the review process, we not only look at the performance of the network-wide performance on an average basis, but we also look at each individual campus's performance. We have in the past, and the board has voted in the past to, in the case where a network manages several campuses, and some of those campuses, or one of those campuses, has not been living up to its contractual obligations. The board has taken action differently on one campus, and, as they had on the others that may be performing better. But in this case, every one of Noble's 14 campuses well outperforms its comparison school, and, and has performed consistently well within its contractual metrics.
Thank you. Jesse?
Providence, I know, and we've talked about this a number of times, but there were some remaining issues from the last renewal process. Are they now current, as of this point, that we feel that going forward, assuming that the conditions are met, that they would most likely in three years be, be eligible for a five-year renewal?
Yeah, I would say yes. So they are current, and I would also say, as I said before, they continue to be a high-performing academically school, and so certainly assuming their performance remains as it is now, they would be eligible for a full-term renewal.
So what is the conditions? What is going to be the process or the system for making sure these conditions are met, and that we tell folks in, in, you know, as quickly and timely a manner possible that they're not meeting conditions, so there are no surprises, there are no misunderstandings about either things are met or not met?
That's right. So I think my, my office will continue to build on its processes to make sure that we are notifying schools as soon as we know that, that there is an issue that has arisen. I think we're, we're taking a deeper look at not only the renewals process, but the ongoing support that we provide schools across the life of their contract, and certainly notification of issues, and then collective problem solving between my office and the schools.
And are there timelines built in? I mean, not, not to say that everybody's going to have a Gantt chart that we agree upon, but close, so that if a timeframe comes, and either we haven't received whatever we need to evidence that the conditions have been met, and if they haven't received reciprocal response from us saying, then both parties should assume job's not done by this date certain.
Yeah. One example I would offer that my office has instituted this year is an annual compliance report, where we tell a school, here is where you met not only the deadlines, but here's where you met sufficiently the criteria for all the documents that were submitted, so that we are catching these, if not, as they happen monthly, we're at least catching them on an annual basis, and can work to correct, so that we're not waiting until the end of the contractual term to, to resolve all of the issues.
Great. Thank you.
May I add there, Jesse, that one of the things we found in the office was that, as we'd moved toward a single accountability system, it was not single. And, and we also did not have well-defined metrics, nor timelines that you suggested in terms of, everybody understand the regularity upon which the, the process fits in renewal. And that's very, very important, and Jack's office has, has developed that.
And even standardized, I mean, again, drawing about what I do on a daily basis, standardized files, where you open one school's file, if there are conditions, it should look like the other one in terms of checks and...
That's right.
...balances that have been checked on a regular basis.
That's right.
I might even add that it would be useful, at this renewal period a year from now, that you report on the schools that were renewed with conditions the prior year, to confirm or, or not confirm that schools have met all conditions, and that conditions have been, you know, taken away.
Absolutely.
It'd be useful for us.
Absolutely. And with some of these schools that are in front of you today, we will be coming back to the board sooner than that to report out on, on progress made.
Thank you, Jack. As, as we address quality in all school options, and a, an accountability system, we also need to think of different school models collaborating to serve neighborhoods. Because many times, you know, we build this separation, or it's built within the system, and now we're serving communities, and we're serving neighborhoods. But with an accountability system, you know, we found out some information about referrals and expulsions. We also need to find out, you know, the success of some charters, and how many are transferred back to their neighborhood school, if it exists, or if it doesn't exist. Sometimes people talk about those things, but we need to find out that data, and where they are really serving, you know, the diverse learners, like in all schools. And it's just not one, for example, learning disability, but students who apply that might require other types of support. And then also, how many are serving neighborhood school students? I know we have that data, and you're going to provide it to us, but, you know, I've asked for that, because I think there's something in the legislation that I asked you last time about serving neighborhood school students. Could you help clarify that?
There is a, a certain percentage allowable under the Illinois state code that allows CPS to provide preference boundaries for charter schools in the city of Chicago. I don't have that specific number or percentage off the top of my head, but it's, it's certainly limited. But we can do it, and we have done it in the past. We do have some charter schools that have preference boundaries. One of the schools, we'll be coming back to this board at one of the upcoming board meetings to talk about a preference boundary for one of the schools that was recently approved by the board last month. So it's certainly something, it's a, it's a tool in our tool belt that we can use going forward.
So when that happens, we monitor that, and it could be part of the conditions?
Absolutely.
Now, when we approved schools in overcrowded areas, how do we make sure that the students are recruited from overcrowded schools?
It's a great question. So one of the examples, the example that I just gave is for a school located in an overcrowded neighborhood, and one of the ways in which we can ensure that the school is providing some overcrowding relief is through the use of a preference boundary. And so we're looking to do that actually with the, the school that I just gave as an example.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
One last point, and again, not necessarily on your presentation, but as Carlos was speaking, it came to mind generally, when we're talking about our, our partners at charter schools, something that I've always, and I don't recall ever seeing, that the premise, a lot of the, early on, the premise of charters was to unfetter them from the bulk of the school code, so they could have freedom to innovate and, and show us what things in the school code maybe are hampering all schools. Do we have a mechanism to draw that information out? I don't, I've never seen a bill in Springfield, I don't recall, where, you know, Inks and some of our other friends have said, you know what, we've discovered that this part of the school code is just weighing us all down, and because we're, we're, we're not hampered by that, CPS shouldn't be hampered, and every other school district in Illinois shouldn't be hampered by it either. Are we getting that information from, from our friends in the charter community?
I think, I think the answer is yes, and we can do more. I think, as Arthe referenced in her presentation, we expect to learn a whole host of things from our charter partners on discipline approaches and other things. As we learned from experiences with our partners at the Fund and New Schools for Chicago over the summer, we learned a lot of innovative approaches that some of our charter schools are taking in the way of delivering instruction, using technology in the delivery of instruction. So there are lots of things we can learn. I think, I think we can do a better job of advertising that, and then certainly looking, looking at that information with a more critical lens to what we can do differently within all of our schools at CPS.
Yes, but if it turns into legislation that we can rally together and say, you know, this isn't good for any school, let's get rid of it, because the school codes are pretty thick, you know? It could, it could probably use some lightning.
I would also say to you, Jesse, having spent some time on this in the past, it's not just the school code, it's our own bureaucratic, bureaucratic code here at CPS. Sometimes we've gotten ourselves encrusted with things that frankly get in the way, and we can learn from others about where some of our own policies are restrictive in ways that they perhaps shouldn't be.
Absolutely.
So, it's a good point, but I think it's not just at one level. It's at another level as well. So, others, thoughts? Thank you, thank you for your presentation, Jack.
Sure. Thank you.
Barbara, anything else?
Yes, and finally, Mr. President, and members of the board, I want to briefly note that the district has extended the candidacy filing date for the local school council elections to March 14th at 3:00 PM. Through the Office of Family and Community Engagement and Governmental Affairs, we've done extensive outreach to encourage participation, and feel that the extension is warranted. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. It's a great point.